All right. So, good evening everyone who's still watching TV or all of us here. This is a January 9th, 2012 school board meeting with a limited agenda. Tonight I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll continue with our mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity in response to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We're dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. We have no visitors this evening, but this would be the time when they could speak. Meg is home sick. Hope she's feeling better soon. And our agenda this evening is to discuss, finalize our warrant as we need to do that by tomorrow. Is my understanding?
About a couple hours.
So, Jim, you want to help me out?
Walk me through it.
Walk me through it. You've been on the chair all evening. I feel terrible, but...
No problem. Article one is the article which you saw. It's no different than the last time that you saw it for purchase of the four properties, you know, the two carpenters, the one Perkins, and the one Walker property. It still does not define a total purchase amount because we still don't have purchase and sale agreements. Now that negotiations have stopped, then now I've got some time. This is my next priority is trying to move these things along so as soon as possible. Hopefully before the 17th, we can fill in that blank. But we do have, you know, really until the 30th of the month to really finalize our warrant, but I'm hopeful we can get a number in there. The second article is just the operating budget article. It's no different than the last time you saw it in terms of the proposed budget and the default budget. All that is fine. Article three has a slight change in it. This is the one where we had talked about raising roughly $770,000, which is a number arrived at through the fire and life safety plan, but wanting to put this into a new fund which had dual purpose. One, to address fire and life safety, the other to potentially be used then for construction of a new school. If we decide not, we get to do a new school, we don't want to put the fire and life safety dollars into the old building. And so what's changed is the name of the fund, and we talked about this the last time we looked at it. So as you can see, this capital reserve fund would be titled Construction of a New School Building and Renovation of Existing School Buildings for Fire and Life Safety Code Compliance. So when I talked to the attorney about it, she said, you know, generally you try to have reserve funds with a reasonably broad title so that you have some flexibility in applying the use of that fund. But she understood the dynamics here are we want to be specific. And so that's, this title is fine if you're okay with it. The dollar amount is the same as in the second year of the three-year plan.
Does everyone else feel that way? I mean, I remember Cliff, you had said you didn't want it to be so narrow. So I just, I mean, I know I suggested it, but I don't want to, you know, pigeonhole us if that's where you think.
I'm comfortable with this.
Okay, good.
Okay. Okay. Flip side.
But before we go, is everyone else?
Is everyone else? Good, okay. And after this typically we had two articles in the past that spoke to the teacher's contract, and these are not included in our warrant. So Articles four and five both deal with withdrawing funds from the expansion of school facilities capital reserve fund for the junior senior high school project. And the reason that they're different. Article four, you heard Dan Bisson speak the other evening about the next step in the school construction phases is design development, which does more detailed design of the school, which then results in another cost estimate, a more refined cost estimate. And in terms of if we're heading towards applying to the state, it just puts us in an even better position to do that. When I asked him, I said, what will be the total cost of that? And I forget how we arrived at the number. He says it's a percentage of costs, and the total cost to do complete design development is around $550,000. And I said, I really believe that's out of reach for us. We won't have a heck of a lot of money left in the expansion of school facilities, assuming we get to use the open space funds. And so I just put in a number of $150,000, which I think is within the limit of what we would have remaining after purchasing the land. And he agreed that, you know, we'll just take the $150,000 and push design development as far as that will take us. And he thought that would be reasonable, reasonably good progress. It's not everything, but it's good progress. So that's on the new building on the new site. As some of you know, there is some interest to take a look at renovation of the current Dan and I have had several conversations about this, and for them to really give a cost estimate, he said, we can't just pull out a number, look at a building and pull out a number. We have to do an engineering analysis and then be able to base that number on some real critical look at the building. And he said that amount will be no more than $40,000, could come in anywhere between 36 and 40, but that's the amount that he estimated. And so I've put that as a separate item if you choose to want to have the answer to that. Now, when we talked today, he said, Jim, you do know that that investigation was done several years ago, and that so there was a detailed analysis. And I looked through my office and couldn't find it, but he has a copy of all of that, and he said he's going to bring it to tomorrow night's Q and A. So you as a board may look at that data and determine it's not worth throwing another $40,000 at it because it's already been studied, and you can take a look at relative numbers that were developed back then, or at least have a conversation with him about it.
Yeah, although the fact that, you know, the cost of the new construction went up so considerably from the last...
True. It's going to be different.
So we'd need to, I mean, will they make those adjustments? Could we have them just adjust?
It would be with current. I asked, I said, can you take the numbers and just project them forward? And he said, no. I mean, it'd be a nice conversation to have more than that, but that was the answer that I got back.
Well, my understanding too is the difference here is that the carpenter property would be in play, whereas the last time it was researched, it wasn't. And the concept that's floating around out there is that the carpenter property would be used for the parking, and then, you know, I have no idea how. I mean, it's just, that's what people are talking about. That's what people are saying the people in town want to know. They want to know if now that we have the carpenter property, hopefully if we get it, on board, how does that change the renovation, if it does at all, to that site? Because before, when they did that study, 2004, whenever it was done, that wasn't on the board.
I really don't know. So anyway, this is the number he's given. If you choose, you put it on the warrant. I believe you should put it as a separate line. Again, the total of those is no more than $190,000, and I'm hopeful we'll have that within that fund to do that work.
So that architectural engineering, whatever, we would get like an itemized report of this is how much it would cost to do this to renovate the building?
I believe that, yeah. And that's what I've asked for, so.
Okay.
So there's no way to, okay. So if we want to get an accurate today's prices number on renovating that building, we would really have to redo the study that got done several years ago.
Again, this is how he explained it to me. Remember all of the systems in that building, and now I'm not sure when the study was done, but roughly six years old, and so, yeah.
Well, I've got at least one question for the Q and A tomorrow night being just that, you know. I would think you could, knowing...
Extrapolate.
Knowing the Department of Ed dollars per square foot of new construction number in the year that that was done, and the number that they're advertising now, which is 175 or something, I want to say?
195.
195.
195, yes.
You know, whatever that percent difference is, you could maybe apply that. That might be some sort of an approximation.
You would almost think you could extrapolate.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you.
I mean, maybe it might have a significant error in it, but...
He said, no. And again, you know, although the 195, you know, if you look at construction costs, it's almost a straight line progression. With the systems they need, maybe it's not, and maybe some systems are more expensive. So they, but it's a great question to ask him, and he'll be there tomorrow night.
So is this just specific to renovation and an addition? Or would an addition be included in the renovation?
I think this is specific to renovation.
Well, is the definition of renovation include addition?
I don't know. Because that's what's floating around out there.
And clearly, we would, if it was feasible to do it, we would want to perhaps do a three-story piece for at least part of the building and move walls out in various directions.
You are, and I'm not the expert to explain it, but you are prevented from doing a three-story addition. And I got, I had some email communication with Ed Murdo, who more or less confirmed it today. The phrase is seismic requirements. Buildings have to be built to code in terms of seismic requirements, and that's all that I know, but you can imagine what that may mean, the ability to withstand certain seismic forces. And from what I've been, what Ed put in his email today was, remember, you do have to comply with the seismic requirements. There's no waiver to that. And the way it's been explained to me, very simply, if you think of forces in a structure, if you have, right now we have a two-story structure. If you attach a three-story structure, that weight gets transferred onto the old building if they're attached. If it's a standalone, different story. But if they are attached, then that weight puts additional pressure onto the building. So the way Dan has always said to me, he said, you can never build higher than two stories on that site if you're keeping that old building. And obviously, if you're attaching it, and one would think you would. But again, that's a question you can talk with him about. He can explain it a lot better than I.
And I think another question that's been put out there before is to renovate that site, would you pretty much just have to tear the whole thing down? I mean, that's what we've been told, that there really isn't anything. So we'd have to ask that question tomorrow night, too.
And I'll say a little bit now of what I understand about that. When I've talked to Dan twice now on this, he has said, basically what you would have to do is gut that building. And that's then assume, you know, you have to make sure that the exterior is structurally sound. And then you rebuild it. And I think there's some confusing messages out there about getting waivers and whatnot. You know, to try and put it in some simple terms, you as the school board are required to provide appropriate facilities that meet the state standards and the building codes and other related codes. And that's defined by law. And then later on in that law, these are all, this law is relative to what those minimum standards are, it specifically states the minimum size of classrooms. And we have so many spaces that do not meet that minimum that, you know, if you're going to uphold your part of this, and that is to adhere to facilities that have the, meet the minimum, then quickly you, you know, what you have in there now functionally changes dramatically. The biggest example that I can think of, for example, is we have an art room, was I think it's 730 square feet. The state minimum is about twice that, 1,440 square feet, and that does not include storage capacity for art projects and equipment and supplies and materials. So that's what happens. Now, I think sometimes, sometimes there's a, if you see something, like there's a letter recently that I know Ed wrote back in response to a citizen who responded, and, you know, my take on that made it sound as if you can get waivers for anything you want. Well, it may have sounded that way, but in the email that I got from him today, it's, you know, basically, as a board, you're going to have to justify every single waiver. And the expectation is that you by and large are meeting those standards that you're obligated to meet, and that, you know, you may get some special circumstances where you can't quite meet them, and then in your project, you'd have to apply for a waiver. But wholesale waivers to kind of just replicate what we have now...
We've been doing that for years and years.
I know, but in a new building. And so it's, and this is a question that is separate from funding. If you're building a new building, you're obligated to build one that meets all the state standards, just like we have state standards on what curriculum we offer, and there's just a whole host of things. It's a lengthy law that defines them all. But when you look, there's a section in there on school construction, and it'll tell you how big your kitchen has to be in the cafeteria, how big are your regular classrooms, and your computer labs, and so forth. And when you look at the analysis of our current building, very many of the spaces are undersized. So if you put them all at the appropriate minimum size, very quickly you've moved well beyond that building. And then, of course, you've got more needs than just what functionally is in that building, so quickly you just, you just don't have enough room on the site. That basically is what happens. But in any case, you know, we need to prove it to people.
Yeah, we do.
You can see that that's what's coming, and so we'll have that discussion, you know.
And that doesn't even include the whole list of like rules for state funding, if state funding was even available, right?
Right, right. Although I will, while you brought that up, I did get an email in the last couple of days that showed that there's some movement in the legislature to, they endorsed creation of a new school building aid program that has this, this, and this, and this as the criteria for which projects could be prioritized.
So they're getting closer.
And then it's, they are. So it's now gone out of that committee, I think, and being referred to another committee. So the game plan that I had mentioned earlier about how Ed Murdo saw things playing out is playing out.
Seems like it's working, yeah.
So I'm hopeful by the end of June, we may know the future of school building aid. That'd be a really good thing for us.
That would be helpful.
Any, in that email, was there anything regarding the size of the fund? I mean, historically, it's been you applied for it and found the money.
Nothing in that email. What I was told, again, this was several months ago, but was told is that the legislature intention seemed to be to cap the fund at the current funding level, which I believe is a $50 million annual outlay. And so the only, while they may approve projects, the reimbursements get delayed because the only way money's available for new projects is when old projects close out. And so it's a slow progression to get you there, you know. So that's all I know, but I was very optimistic to see that they had actually said, yep, we're endorsing this, let's move it on to this committee, and so that's a...
Well, and speaking of, I mean, this kind of seems silly to even mention, but say in the utopian world we all want to live in, it does come, would some of these things that we're paying for now be up for reimbursement?
Under current rules, they're all reimbursed.
All right. So I just want to make that clear, too, to people before they vote on it, that if it does come down in the future, who knows how long it would be, we could maybe apply to get some of this money back.
I mean, the rules of the game could change, but everything at, talked about at the state level, none of the discussions were around changing that.
Okay, good.
That feature, so.
There was a little, I got an email or I saw an email from someone about Ed Murdo saying, talking about whether or not he would support renovating that building. Did you see that? I think I forwarded it.
Somebody, I think somebody raised a question with him, and, you know, I think his response was something of, my comments may have been taken out of context or have been misrepresented, one of the two, but he was saying that the Department of Ed's role is very much around the funding piece, and that, you know, schools, school departments, they're not, they don't prohibit them from designing their projects. And again, I interpreted that letter as, I was kind of alarmed because that's not the way I've heard it before. It sounded kind of like, and in my words...
It was noncommittal.
Cut blanch, that you'd get waivers for anything. And so I emailed him back to say, I've got a meeting, you know, Tuesday night.
Hello.
I need answers, so please clarify me. And the clarification, you know, basically came today, and it's what I've described to you.
And you have that in writing?
Yes, I do. I know.
We need everything in writing.
Yeah, I guess you're right. I should bring that out, I think, tomorrow.
Bring it, bring it. I'm telling you.
Post it or do something, yeah.
Yeah, because that is the message. So the message to, you know how the state works, not just his office, but other offices, they're a little bit careful around making demands and tough...
Telling you what to do.
Oh, yeah.
...backbone decisions when they're not really given money, and they're telling the local community what to do. But the law is very specific, and clearly in that email today, the expectation is that a building by and large needs to comply with...
That RSA or whatever.
That RSA that talks about minimum size of rooms and other spaces. And again, in the thing, he also put in, remember that seismic requirements will still apply here.
Can we have a copy of that RSA at the meeting tomorrow night?
Yeah.
That was the Ed 300 that you emailed today, right?
I have it.
That was the Ed 300 that you emailed today?
I think I did.
You emailed us the link and said a little bit about it. You probably don't even remember, but you've done so many things.
No, well, I responded, somebody had asked me a question through Facebook, and so in the little time I had, I tried to put together a good answer to him. And there's a letter from Ed Murdo back, it's back in, I think it was April of 2006, I believe. And in it, you know, he was asked to come to the school to do his own inspection of the school and then write a report. And the report, and the letter goes on for two pages detailing inadequacies, you know, science classrooms inadequate, and special ed totally inadequate, and it just keeps on the art room.
Don't you have that posted? It's on the facilities website. It's under the program analysis.
You know, I don't know that I have it on the facilities website because I always knew it was there, but I haven't really looked at it too recently. Okay, good, I'm glad it's on.
It said March 31st, 2004, and it was his name, and...
No, I haven't looked at that. No, this is an April 2006 letter.
Oh, okay. So maybe, I don't know. There's letters out there.
No, but basically, he is citing numerous deficiencies with the facility, and then I think goes on to say, yes, you know, again, similar kind of message. I'm not telling you whether or not about renovation on that site, but basically, however, you're really some standard in terms of the minimum standards for school facilities.
Okay.
Jim, I'm still a little concerned about Article five.
Yep.
Can you convince me to vote on this, Article five?
Well, here's what, you know, and you'll see this in this email from Ed Murdo. He said, I understand your dilemma. And he said, many times what happens is you have to design the renovation to prove to people the point that renovation is really more expensive than new construction. And he gave as an example, he mentioned a fellow that I know, that we both know, he's superintendent in Keene. And when Keene High School went to do a renovation, a new construction proposal for its high school, I'm not sure what year, they had to go to the point to prove people that renovation of the building was not sufficient. And the difference in Keene, it's in his email, was that a renovation was going to cost $52 million, and the new building cost $38 million.
So the motivation of this article basically is because of Murdo?
Well, no, and I think a genuine interest with people that think it's a viable solution.
From the public.
Yeah, the citizens do.
Oh, yeah, there's lots of...
You've got emails from the public.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is a lot of, as Brian's, I mean, I wish I weren't on Facebook. It can become all-consuming, but on the other hand, it's a terrific communications tool. So I'm learning a lot by watching this, and I wish I could actively participate. But clearly you can see that this is a concept that people want to have vetted out to some degree. Now, again, this analysis was done some years ago, and so we do have some information, and that, you know, prompts a question of can we extrapolate it to today's numbers? I don't know, so.
Well, so I'm wondering, you know, so for this, can we, if, you know, if we determine, you know, if after speaking a little bit more with him and asking the questions tomorrow night, we determine, oh, you know what, we can use the study that was done several years ago and update these numbers, you know, can we write something in this article to say that if we don't need to do it, it will stay in the fund? And the same, and really the same thing with Article four, because what if we, you know, for whatever reason, determine, you know what?
It's a waste of money.
It's we don't need to do this right now. I would rather have the ability to put the money back if we...
Help me, but here's how I thought the process works out. We need to approve a warrant, but it's purely for the discussion at the public hearing. And so that's the 17th. Then based on that, even though we're going to try to do it on the 19th at our regular meeting, we really have until the end of the month to set the warrant. You can make changes to this before the deliberative session, which is in federal.
Can we serve it out?
Further, I think you can strike it out.
Right. Further, at the deliberative session...
People could do it.
Is where things can be amended or amended out, right.
Well, that number, if the number, if we, if we, you know, sit down with Dan and say, Dan, look at all this hard work that you did. Clearly, you know, with this, you know, having now reviewed it because, you know, more closely, you know, blowing the dust off of it, maybe there's more there that, that maybe this can be done with $28,000. So if it comes to the point where we're that far along, you know, the calendars move that far, at the deliberative session, someone could amend this to $28,000 at that point in time. So we do have a lot of time to...
Yeah, yeah.
...answer that number.
We're just setting the stage for the public hearing. That's all right now, yeah.
Well, the thing we need to do is really get all of the topics of current articles, you know, at a minimum.
So we can at least discuss them publicly.
So we can discuss them at that point.
Right. Now, as we've been talking, I might suggest we may want to change in line three. Instead of saying renovation, you might want to put slash addition, right?
I mean, oh, go ahead. I was just saying, but I want to go back to the point... I was just saying, but I want to go back to the point that if we decide we don't want to spend this, after the, you know, say we keep it, we do the, you know, deliberative session, everything stays, people vote on it, they vote yes, and then we decide, you know what, this $150,000, we really don't, we're really not to a point right now where we need to do this.
Can we make it a special?
I want to keep it in, I want to keep it in that capital reserve.
Right. Because if...
You may, very well.
If this passes...
It comes out.
It comes out, and then...
Right.
...will become part of the general fund surplus.
Isn't that what happened to the elevator?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
Well, can you make a special warrant article out of something that's...
Already a trust fund?
Already a trust fund.
So, if we don't use it, it stays in the trust fund?
No. Well...
Could we ask? No?
You can say, some of up to, you can do an up to, up to $150,000.
Any unused portions?
That adds the flexibility you want.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm. No, what's that?
Yeah.
Do what?
Up to, that if...
On both of them?
That flies with the, you know...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
With the poetry of the law.
Yeah. And if it doesn't, can we add a line, any unused, any unused portions, we'll go back to the...
If you don't use it, it's still in it.
Wait, it doesn't?
No, because you're taking it out.
You're raising and appropriating. What does that mean, then?
Helped, then. No.
But the $170,000 that you did through warrant articles here from expansion of the school, was that from the same?
Right, right.
It's reimbursed, we get reimbursed. You spend on the engineering fees.
Yes.
We send the invoice over to Ed Kelsair, who works as a sign.
Right. So, it...
But if we don't spend it, it doesn't come out.
Right.
So, I think what you're saying is you're worried that the wording says raise and appropriate means it has to come out of that fund. But if we don't spend that money...
Is that what we're doing this week?
Not what we're doing now, yeah.
All right.
It's a good point to make sure.
Now, a whole other concept. I know. Go to Article 3. You're putting $770,000 into a dual-purpose fund. If, if the land passes, that's some degree of optimism. My recommendation is, you don't jump to do $770,000 for fire life safety, and we need to have a real conversation with fire officials on what, if anything, we do. And, I mean, the one I've had has shown, Jim, flexibility. I'll work with you. And so, it could, it could play out that that money sits there. Again, the timeframe, you get to June, June, you may have a sense, you may have a sense of what's the new building aid program and application process. And the criteria may give you optimism that you're going to be a high priority project. And as I understood it playing out, that shortly thereafter, you'd be able to submit applications to the state. And then, using the criteria, they would prioritize all of these. And that, I think it was by February, you'd know where you stand in this prioritized list. That's how it was described to me. So, you may, you may sit on this money. But again, again, that, you don't know, I mean, if the land doesn't go, then I think you start doing your fire life safety. That's a, that's a bad sign. So, but I guess where I was heading with that is, at some point, you might do the design development, again, I said roughly $500,000, out of that money, as opposed to the expansion money. But that's still out there a ways.
Because this Article 3, I just want to make sure I understand it, is a completely new fund. It's not the school expansion fund that we have.
Yes, it would be.
But I'll tell you something, my feeling with that money is that it needs to sit there.
Until we...
Until we...
We know... Vote for a new school.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't blame you. I understand that.
I wouldn't spend a drop of it, because if we, if we don't, we know that by 2015, we have to have all of those...
Right. And we need that money in hand. I agree with you there.
I mean, you showed the other night, there was plans for the elevator. And I was just cringing, thinking, we can't put that money into that building if we don't know for sure that. So, I really would hesitate to...
Yeah, and that's fine. And then, the other one, I, you know, I agree with you. In fact, even you may have heard me say it at the board meeting the other night, even though Dan was here, I said, I think that that article is going to go away, because I had a draft of this without a number in it, because Dan hadn't given me a number yet. And on one level, I feel like the less warrant articles we have, the better we are.
Oh, yeah.
I don't care where the money source is. And so...
I think, I mean...
At least for the sake of conversation, maybe you do want to still continue. But I don't know. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think Number 5, I mean, it's a small group of people in the town. But what I'm hearing from a lot of people is that they want the option.
I don't know.
They ultimately, I mean, people have even said, they want the option to be put on a further warrant, like, if we ever went to a new school, and to give them the option of building a new school or renovating. They want the town people to be able to decide that. And that's where they're going with this. And that's what this drive to understand, they need to know if it's going to cost more money to renovate and build an addition on that place. And a lot of them have said, if you can prove to me that that will cost a lot more money, then I'm with you. Because they understand that school needs to be, something needs to be done. But they're hesitant. And a lot of them, unfortunately, are saying they're hesitant to even vote for the land right now. We keep trying to say, you need the land regardless, for renovation even, because the idea is to make carpenters a big parking lot and free up the parking lot to put an addition. And I mean, I don't know where these people are coming up with these ideas, but this is what they're saying. So, I mean, I think the land is a no-brainer. I mean, we have to have that land. So, hopefully, we can...
I agree. For either option.
For either option. And if that's what people are saying, and you're out there right now at 11:10, 20, watching us, which I hope you're not, you know, you have to vote for the land.
So, shall we leave both 4 and 5 on for the public hearing? Or are you interested in just...
I'd like to hear what the public has to say. Yeah.
I think so, too.
Give them the option to say, I mean, tomorrow night, we're going to have a question and answer. But I'm sure more will come out at the public hearing. Now, can I, oh, go ahead. You were going to ask.
One thing I've been thinking about, has bothered me, Jim, is, is that, out of $40,000, it's just architectural and engineering fees. When you look at that land, where the parking lot is in back of the school, if you're going to expand out into there, I wonder if some of this engineering is going to be carried into that study? What is there?
We're going to have to, if we're going to be expanding out of that lot.
That, to me, would seem like, I don't think you want to put a bill, any type of building in.
And I'll have to have a conversation with Dan, because I have a feeling that $40,000 may be purely a renovation of that building, not design further on that site.
Before you got here, we had big floods, and the water was way up in that area.
I know, especially in that lower parking lot is certainly very low.
That's what they're saying. They want to do an addition there.
And Murdo, when I walked that land with Dan, Murdo, is, Dan, I think, is...
Ed, Ed Murdo, yeah.
That really concerned him, that whole area. Because we walked that whole brook all the way up through here and I in a field. And he said, wow, this, this is flood potential.
Why he doesn't, you know...
But the feeling out there that I'm hearing is, it was a 100-year flood. It's not going to happen again. And yet, you know, you don't, I mean, it happened twice in two years, right? So...
We don't know what kind of block we have.
Yeah, but you still have to, you have to design a building knowing you've got a brook in the back.
Oh, I get it. I get it. I totally get it.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to see that in some of this, too.
Find out from him.
Well, yeah, at this point, it'd be $40,000. That's what we'll go for at the public hearing, but I will talk with Dan about, is this really the right number, you know?
Now, prior to going to this public hearing, do we have to, are we at the process where we have to say, I make a motion to accept Article 1? Is that, we have to vote on all of these articles right now?
In...
Or are we not at that point yet?
Well, we do need to vote.
We need to vote. I think we could do them...
The entire warrant?
Presented with a...
Amendments.
I see one amendment to, in Article 5, to change the language to renovation slash addition.
Right. And then, the other...
You wanted to do the up to.
In both of those.
But in further discussion, it's from how the capital reserve funds work. I'm not sure it's really that necessary. I mean...
Yeah, I know.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
And is that worth...
It's only...
It's only if we spend it.
As we get built, you know. And so, like with the $170,000, if we don't spend it, all stays in there.
Yep.
Good.
So...
Okay. We just had one change.
With that, Linda.
Sorry, the change is to slash.
On Article 5, line 3, we'll say renovation slash addition.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I thought that was Article 3.
No.
No.
Bye. So, you were saying, Linda?
I was saying that I will make a motion to accept, or to approve all warrant articles as presented with the slight amendment to Article 5 to add slash addition next to renovation.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one other piece. If you notice at the very end, the date that I have on there, that's no big deal, but it says 19th day of January 2012. And I'm anticipating that at the January 19th...
School board meeting.
School board meeting is when...
Will officially...
Hopefully, we'll have all our information and be able to make an official warrant for the deliberative. Okay?
Should we add?
Yeah, because the, because the reality is, like, Article 1 doesn't have dollar values. So, actually, so, I mean, does it make sense for us to...
Even vote on it? It has to go to...
Well, if we don't, I, you know...
It has to go to the public hearing, though.
It's hard. I mean, I can't put an amount in now. I don't have it, you know. Hopefully, that night, I'll be able to talk about what it is. But things will have to move pretty quickly.
Should we say, add to the motion draft on 1, 9, 12? I mean, is that...
Or add something to the effect that, to insert the dollar value for the total sum to be inserted on, at, prior to the public hearing? Something to that effect?
Jen's looking at us like...
Get those mumbles?
What are you talking about?
No, no, no.
I know, it's 10:25. We're all a little punchy. What do we think?
I mean, I feel like we can discuss it in a public hearing without the specific dollar amount. I can certainly talk about the range in which I expect it to come.
And you have a feeling that you might have that? I mean, with whatever discussions you've had, you might have that?
Yeah, I've been delayed a bit. But I have a feeling that all three should be able to say okay.
Okay.
You know, and if they say okay, then that'd be good enough. But the other, there is one other change I've noticed in here, just typo kind of thing. Article 1, first line, the sum of, instead of the numeral 1, I'm going to put the word 1.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, the understanding of the motion, as I take it, is that a number will be inserted there when it's finalized.
Do you get that?
Yeah, I can.
Jen?
Jen, you got that?
All right. So, we have a first and a second.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Pushing to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yee-hoo.
Thank you, Chris, for the leaving.